Going to open up our scheduled public hearing for the City of Leominster Planning Board. Continued open public meeting for site plan application from Merriam Avenue, map 261, panel five Starbucks restaurant.
Should we just mention that we have John Souza on the phone and Tom Carrigan on the phone participating?
Yes, we do. And we have, and so we have a quorum of five out of eight.
That's correct.
Alright, do we have anyone presenting this plan?
Sure, my name is Anthony Cleves, I'm with Women of Bing and Associates. And Mike Rossi is also here to represent property. My understanding is one of the major outstanding items of discussion is a traffic report for the project. Traffic report has been completed, just finishing up this week. And that's been emailed to the planning department probably in the past half hour. So you probably didn't even know you had it yet, but that just got emailed out. So really not much to discuss on that, because our understanding is we didn't get it in time for everyone to review it. So the anticipation would be at the next meeting, the traffic engineers pair corporation could come and present the traffic report to the board at that next meeting to discuss that in more detail. But if possible, we'd like to kind of discuss tonight is that our understanding is that peer review is going to be requested of that traffic report. So if possible, if we could kind of get that process going in the works so that that can kind of move along between now and the next meeting, so then we kind of stay moving forward if possible. So that's, that's the update.
Alright, that sounds like a good plan. And here's Sal, John and Tom, Sal just walked in.
Okay.
Sal, you just started, this is Starbucks.
No parking.
No, I know, I have to take the shuttle.
They filed a traffic study. Want to update?
We're gonna rehash it.
It was only 30 seconds.
So Anthony Cleves, I'm here on behalf of the Starbucks project. So understanding the last, one of the big outstanding items is the traffic report for the Starbucks project. So that's just been completed, just got that email to Elizabeth earlier this evening. And so our understanding is we can we talk about that tonight. Our expectation is the next meeting, we'd have the traffic engineers pair corporation come in and kind of go over that traffic report. That's probably a public hearing process. But in the meantime, we're hoping to be able to discuss and move along is our understanding is that a peer review was going to require of that traffic report. So we're hoping to kind of get that process moving along tonight. So that was the update.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sounds good, so when?
So I move to continue the hearing until?
How much time do you have?
So the next, the next meeting for date that we would have is a holiday, it's January 17th. So the next one is February?
Seventh of February?
So February 7th?
Yep.
That's fine.
Do we have anything already?
So I guess the question was, are there enough times? So we're ready to present the report.
We haven't seen it.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, so we can, we can come and discuss that in more detail. The question would be is the process of having your peer review?
Yep.
If you already have a peer reviewer selected?
I'll deal with that in old business.
Okay.
So do we have a?
No, 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 it's gonna be done in a minute.
Well, it will, you know, under old business, we can't make a motion during the hearing, can we?
No. Yeah.
What are we gonna, we're going to continue the hearing to February 7th? Who's going, who's the peer, who's going to conduct the peer review?
On the 7th, no.
Okay, so it's February 7th at 6:30.
Right, and who's going to conduct the peer review?
So here we have, we have options. As, as we've been working with other projects in the city, for Willard Street, I've been reaching out to get quotes for that project. So I've been dealing with maybe five different engineering firms that could probably do a traffic review. So I don't know how the board wants me to proceed. Do you want us to need to use, we have a peer reviewer that we've used in the past that was, that the board was pleased with, that was Green International, we could stick with them. Or I could get quotes from different, different firms and approach it differently if the board would like. I don't know how, I don't know how the board wants to do it.
Yeah, does it have to go out to bid?
For the amount?
Yeah.
It's hard to say, I have to get estimates.
Right, so I know that.
Oh, that's, yeah, well, does that make a difference?
I think it does. Of course it does.
Okay.
So typically, engineering services don't need to go out to bid. Usually when things go out to bid like that, it'd be more for the applicant's benefit. Such that, you know, I could say, here's a $50,000 bill that you gotta pay.
That's right.
You know, so it'll be more discussion with Mike if you want to have three quotes.
I could get, I could get a couple of, I could get three, three quotes or so.
We want to expedite, so.
And then I could see what the timeframe is availability to do the review is too, because some of the firms might be backed up and not have the capacity to do the review.
Okay, so if we're not, if we're not obliged statutorily to do it out to bid, why don't we just confer with Anthony and the applicant about who to use, if we can do it that way?
If possible, I think that would work well to try to expedite things. If we can work with the planning department, you know, I think it's a great idea to find out who's available. Some people are pretty busy.
Yeah, we could continue it.
Definitely coming up on under old business.
I can check with, I can check with three and see what the pricing and availability is, and then make a decision administratively as to which one to use.
So I think procedurally, what we have to do is, is continue the hearing. And then when it comes up again under old business, then we'll make a.
Yeah, but I don't know if you can do that with the hearing.
So you can do it?
The hearing is still open, so all discussions need to be during the hearing.
Okay, so.
Continue the hearing.
Alright, John, I, I have it, John, it's okay. Alright, you can't have it both ways, you can't be in Florida and chair the meeting, okay? I'm here, there you go. So I, my suggestion is let's, I think if we just have a procedure in place of Elizabeth communicating with the applicant, and then we can continue the hearing, and then under old business, we'll make the motion that it's gonna go out to a peer.
Usually agree upon.
Right. Okay, is there, is there anything, is there anything else? Does anyone here in the audience have any other comments? Board members?
Go with that.
Does anyone have, John or Tom?
No.
Alright, so I need a motion, you need a second.
I just have, are you guys looking at any other options on the layout?
We're gonna shoot into traffic. No, at this time, I don't think there's any changes to the plans. It's, we're just working on the traffic report at this point.
Because at the last meeting, there were a lot of comments about the layout and revising that. So if that's gonna happen, then I would need something in time to do a review before the next meeting.
No, I think at the last meeting, someone from the public came out and, well, Mike Rossi with our team, I think. Someone from the public pointed out some concerns with the earlier layout. And we advised the board that we looked at their concerns and made modifications to the plan. And the plan that we submitted addressed all their concerns.
But now we're gonna have to look at what the traffic analysis says, and then we just get from it, then we just go from there. So we're, we're a fluid work at this point.
So the next step is for you, we submitted a traffic report earlier this evening, then for the board to have the peer review done, and then we'll formally have our traffic engineer present the plan. And hopefully at that time, you have the peer review done as well, since it's now open up the way.
Right.
Yep.
That works.
So staff has the authority to get escrow money to pay for this peer review?
Again, we'll make a formal motion under old business, but that's the, that's what we're suggesting.
Okay.
If that's agreeable there.
That's fine. Alright, so any, anything else before we move to, I think Paul has a motion to continue the hearing?
Second.
Motion made second to continue it to February 7th at 6:30?
Yep.
Okay, then we'll take that other motion under the old business, because that is the appropriate way to do it. Okay.
We should have enough time yet, right?
I think so too, tell me.
Alright, it's gonna be up to whoever, the reviewers, yeah, alright, so that's.
And if you need more time, we'll just figure it out.
Yes, okay, alright. Motion made second to continue February 2nd, all the, 7th, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you have to do it all?
Yeah, I, so John Souza?
Aye.
Tom Carrigan?
Aye.
And then, yes?
Yes, so Sal, yes, Carol, Dean?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Alright. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
It is now 6:40, so we can open up the 6:40 public hearing for City Council petition 20-22 regarding overflow lots to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles scheduled by the chair.
Okay, you might recall that the board's already looked at this. This has gone to the City Council and it's come back to the board for referral. Do you have any rehash why we're here and why we're looking at this?
Alright, so on, back in November of 2021, on behalf of the planning board, Elizabeth would file the petition to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to parking of unregistered vehicles. Okay, so basically, from tow yards or car dealerships, there are unregistered vehicles parked. And so what, what's been the, so this is the proposal?
This is the proposal.
So under section 22-4, we're proposing the definition of a tow yard?
Yeah.
As an outdoor storage facility licensed by the Licensing Commission for the temporary storage of towed vehicles. This does not include disposal, permanent dis- assembly, salvage, or accessory storage of inoperable vehicles. And we're putting it under the table of uses under 2217. Transportation uses new or used automobile dealer for a special permit from the planning board, and overflow lot as a site plan, and tow yard the same, and only under the industrial zone. I, well, I think by, by operational law, I'd say grandfathered in, I would think.
Business law.
Right, and then, so then there's, we adding, proposing to add section 47.9 for parking of unregistered motor vehicles. All parking areas in the city with the exception of licensed tow yards. Licensed or new or used automobile dealerships and licensed newer used automobile overflow lots are for registered vehicles only. A maximum of one unregistered vehicle assembled or disassembled is permitted per required parking area. Any violation of the parking in excess of one registered vehicle, unregistered vehicle subject to code enforcement by the Director of Inspections. The next section reads, one additional unregistered motor vehicle assembled or disassembled may be kept, stored, or allowed to remain on a parcel provided that not more than one such additional unregistered motor vehicle may be kept, stored, or allowed to remain on a parcel for more than a total of 30 days in one calendar year. And the third amendment or addition is violation of the, of this entire section shall be punished by a fine of $50 for the first 100 for each subsequent offense. Each day that a violation exists or continues on a parcel shall be deemed a separate offense. This chapter may be enforced by any office, police officer, or the building inspector. Anyone have any comments on those additions under the zoning ordinance?
I don't.
I agree. I have a question on the table of uses.
Yeah?
You got new or used automobile dealer? You got, everything is no except a special permit, industrial. We have new or used automobile dealers in the commercial area.
With the exceptions of licensed tow yards, licensed dealers.
I think, I think that's the matter, I think it's, it's special permit, it's commercial, and I thought it was business B.
Special permit, yes.
Special, special permit.
Now, now, not to throw any bones in this one.
That's what we have today. We have a commercial areas in B.
Yeah, we don't have just industrial, there's commercial, there's, you know, you have garages in some of these, you know, residential neighborhoods as well. No, they're not talking about dealerships, they're talking about outdoors. Right, right. So be a special permit, I think, put a special permit, control it. The other problem that could end up a problem is I don't see anything that says, you know, you go by any place that does mechanical repairs, and there's always 10 or 20 cars sitting there not registered, sitting in bear lots in the property with the garage and the gas stations on it. I don't see that mentioned in here. So I think you're opening a can of worms if we don't mention that, because all of a sudden, you know, they may be fixing those cars up to sell it themselves to make some extra money. I don't know, Tommy, jump in here.
Yeah, that's a good point. I mean, I mean, I have a tow yard and a auto shop, and I have a number of vehicles unregistered.
Alright, but you're okay the way the ordinance reads. But what if I'm sitting, I'm a garage on, on Central Street somewhere, and I got, you know, 10, or even on Main Street, the one near City Hills, they always have two cars out there. All of those places that do repair always have a bunch of cars out there. And they're not necessarily registered, because they may pick them up as a wreck. How about automobiles? Is that a registered yard? It's not a dealership, that's not a used or new car dealership, it's not a, that's not mentioned either, so.
Yeah, salvage yards is a number of in this city.
So we need to, we need to make sure.
Should be identified, yeah, they're licensed, correct?
Right.
Yeah, but you think.
I think this is where we have to make the definition, is that they're licensed.
Yeah, this is for probably more non-licensed places.
Right.
Well, so do I, as just a right of owner, a service station, have the right to keep 20 unregistered cars, you know, parked on my property there, because I may get to get to fixing them, or I may not?
It's not what your license.
That's what your license for? No, that's right. That's what I'm saying, I think we need to look at this a little deeper. We're hitting some areas here that are gonna cause problems down the road. That's all I get to say. That's enough, I guess. I could, I could go by 10 places, we're three miles ahead of it. We've got multiple, multiple cars sitting there that have been sitting there for years. So we're gonna get them all towed out? We can't even get the, the site plans inspected after they're finished. No offense to the inspection team, we'll see what's left after.
Alright, well, how should we proceed?
I think we need some new business. I would like to.
Do you wanna work on it with me?
Yeah, do you wanna work on it with Elizabeth?
You can call me, if you catch me, I'll help you with it all. But those are the areas we need to address, we need to address, you know, the mechanic shops, the automobiles. And first, we gotta figure out what the licenses that they do have entail. They may be perfectly authorized to do what they're doing. So I would take a look at the license board first.
Can I just say something, Sal?
Yep.
If somebody got a license, usually the number of cars allowed are on the license.
Okay.
So if you have a 20-car license, and you have 40 cars in your property, you know, there should be some problem.
That's right, but we should know what those licenses look like, and know what they are, and who's got what, and then.
Correct.
Yeah, because I'll bet you, I don't have a license. But we're gonna do the.
Well, there's used car license and there's business licenses.
That's right.
So then we wanna continue this hearing.
We're gonna continue this.
You want to continue this on February 7th and then work on it?
Yeah.
So again, 6:40, same thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, at 6:40, why don't we do that? I'll help, I'll help you out too, Elizabeth.
So, yeah, and the big note is just put, you know, automobiles, just put automobiles.
This does sound like Tom's area of expertise.
And mechanic, mechanic shops within, within, you know, service stations.
And then, John, are you, are you still, are you, do you still want to look into the other zoned areas where this would, we want it to be allowed at least by special permit? Or is industrial enough?
I don't think industrial's enough.
Well, I don't think we want a residential, so.
No, no.
So is this B and C as well?
Yeah, I thought so.
I would think so too.
B, C, and industrial, and we want any two, village, no.
Okay.
I'll go commercial.
That's it.
Yeah.
B and C, C is commercial.
Alright. Okay, so do I have a motion to continue this to?
So move.
At 6:40, motion made in second? All those in favor, I'll start with Dean?
Aye.
Count me, yes?
Yes.
Sal, yes?
Yes.
Paul, yes, Tom?
Yes.
And John?
Yes.
Okay, motion counts. Alright. We're going to regular meeting, call to order.
Patrick Curla, excused, Paul Weiser.
Here.
Sal Chaconi.
Here.
Tom Carrigan.
You see, yeah, Tommy?
Tom Carrigan? Are you here, Tom?
Hey, Mr. Mute. He ran away, he thought nobody was listening.
Tom?
We can go back.
Excused, Dean Valier.
Here.
Carol Vittorioso.
Here.
John Souza.
Yes. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Tom Carrigan? Are you here, roll call?
Say yes.
Yes.
There you go. Or tap the phone three times, use the dialing thing there, you're in a lot of dialing.
2.0.
I'm on a phone, I'm not on a cell phone.
2.0, 2.0, minutes of previous meeting of November 15th, 2021. Any questions, comments, additions, subtractions, criticisms? Have a motion to accept?
Motion accept. Save a second.
Okay, second.
Last one.
Motion by Paul?
Second by me.
Okay, motion made second, all those in favor to approve the minutes from November 15th?
Aye.
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 Dean?
Yes.
Carol, yes?
John and Tom are, aye?
Sal, yes.
Yes.
Paul, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I think we do have to do a whole call.
Yeah, we do, we're here on the phone, okay.
So did you go back, do you need anybody on the phone?
I guess I just heard, yeah.
4.0, old business, no, I'm sorry, 3.0. Plan submitted A and R for 905 West Street.
Can you find that?
905, one's plenty over here, Elizabeth, 905. Is anyone here to present it? Thank you.
Good evening, Doug Andrejik, Andrejik Lantzervay. We're here for David Arsenal, the owner of the property at 905 West Street. It's out on the northerly end of West Street, almost at the city line. Mr. Arsenal owns number 905 West Street containing his house and 35,000 square feet of land. He also owns a money parcel containing just under 35,000 square feet of land. He'd like to eliminate the lot line between them, providing both parcels into one undivided lot containing just under 70,000 square feet of land with 425 feet of size.
And no building plans at all, well, he's not here for that. He meets all the requirements.
Yep, second. Alright, John, John and Tom, any comments about this plan?
No.
Easy as they come.
Sounds okay.
Alright.
Thank you very much.
I have a motion to endorse by Sal, second by Paul, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Tom, Tom, Tom Carrigan?
Aye.
John Souza?
Aye.
Paul from Paul Weiser?
Yes.
Sal?
Yes.
Carol, yes, Dean?
Yes.
We might have it ready for you tomorrow morning.
Alright.
Hopefully, Rick Clark's gonna have site.
Moving on, 4.0, old business. Continued site application for Merriam, this has been continued, but do I have a motion to allow the planning director to hire, along with the applicant, a, an independent traffic engineer for review?
Yes, so move.
Motion by Paul, second by Sal. Roll call vote, Dean?
Yes.
Carol, yes, Sal?
Yes.
Paul? John Souza?
Yes.
Tom Carrigan?
Yes.
Your motion carries. 6.0 communications, 6.1 Katie Lane Leggett Place subdivision.
Wait, we missed, we missed 5.0.
Oh, I'm sorry, 5.0, I don't know why I'm keeping that.
So we're tabling that until February 7th?
That's right, because I already, yes, 5.1 City Council petition 2022 regarding overflow lots to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to the parking of unregistered vehicles. Planning Board to make recommendation to the City Council. This is continued to February 7th for some amendments to who else would apply as exemptions to that. And perhaps the table of uses.
So those other guys' businesses, they must be in some table of use, right?
What is it?
You know, like automobiles and.
Some of those are in other tables, yes.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that.
Yeah, well, that's a look, and make sure that those are listed.
Alright, 6.0 communications, 6.1 Katie Lane Leggett Place subdivision planning board to review request for extension on completion of improvements.
Okay, I just texted Mr. Exares, he's going to be calling us, he wants to be part of this discussion.
Alright, do I have a motion to move to 6.2?
So move.
Motion made second, all those who oppose that? 6.240B application for.
That's Mr. Exares.
Go back to 6.1.
Hello, do we have Mr. Exares on the phone?
Yes, you do, oh, hello, that's not a while.
I'm good, you're here with the board. You've got John Souza on phone, Tom Carrigan on phone, you've got Paul Weiser here, Sal Chaconi, Carol Vittorioso, and Dean Valier.
So, good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Exares. So you're looking for an extension on completion of improvements for Katie Lane Leggett Place subdivision?
Yeah, so the status of that project is something that we worked out with the DPW. And during the time that it came to the board, we were waiting for input from the DPW. That's why we asked to be continued, unfortunately, that message didn't get through. And you had a hearing on it, and since then, we have resolved everything, we have an agreement with DPW. So we're asking that be extended so we can consummate our deal with the DPW.
Okay, I just want to read into the record, Mr. Exares. Okay, I just want to read into the record, Mr. Exares, an email dated November tenth, uh, uh, hopefully you're aware of it, from Ray Racine to Elizabeth regarding Katie Lane. Elizabeth, John and I have visited Katie Lane and have the following recommendations, Mr. Exa, Mr., Mr. Exares has agreed to regrind and pave Katie Lane in its entirety. The drainage easement will be loom and seeding to establish and avoid erosion. He will have all legal work completed for eminent domain takings for road acceptance, please let me know your opinion, Ray, Raymond Racine, Director of Public Works.
That, that document is accurate.
Great. Okay.
Okay, good.
So, so were you looking for Jim for, for, uh, uh, extension?
Because we gave him till November first.
November first?
We originally had given him till November first, twenty twenty-one, to make the improvements.
Yeah. Yeah.
He's asking that we not exercise the bond, that we allow him opportunity to make the improvements and make the extension to maybe somewhere along the lines of June first or up to the board.
You know, so, so most, most of that work is weather sensitive.
Yes.
So we have to have a period of time to do it when the weather was able to do the, perform the duties that are required.
Jim, what looks good timeframe wise?
Is June first realistic?
Jim, can you hear us?
No, I couldn't hear that last time, I apologize.
Is June, is June one realistic or do you want more time?
It's June twenty, it's true, it's true. Pro- probably not. Because by the time you bring the company into regrind and loom and seed, and then we have to do the eminent domain taking, the issue with the roadway is that the, uh, there has to be a taking for the, for the street right away, that's the real issue, it's a legal issue.
What about August first?
I don't, I don't think that's gonna happen by June first.
How about August first?
I think that's more realistic.
Jimmy, what do you think's a, a, a real good timetable so that we, we hit it? You know, would it be August, would it be September?
I think August is reasonable, it's, it's more legal work, the physical grinding of the road is only a three week operation, and Ray Racine has already organized that with a contractor that we both approved.
Yeah.
And the looming and seeding is just, it's just weather, I mean, it's just, it's a small area to loom and seed. Now, those two items aren't significantly time wise, the significant is that there has to be an actual eminent domain taking, and we're working with Coleman and Page and two of your city councils to get that done.
Okay.
And it's very difficult to put a timeframe on that kind of stuff, because it's not something I have a lot of expertise in. Uh, it seems reasonable that August first is doable.
So, we'll put that as a shoot for dating if we need to change it, we'll go from there.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Elizabeth, there's also in our packet a letter from.
Why, why don't we do two things on this?
There's a letter from you dated September twenty second.
Hold, hold on, John, Paul has a question.
In our packet, there's a letter from you to Mr. Exares dated September twenty second.
Yes.
Other issues not addressed by disagreement with the DPW? Are we just forgetting all the rest of that, or are you satisfied that those things are resolved?
I, you know, it's up to the board. When the, when the DPW first made a inspection, they made a list of all of those things that needed to be done.
And so now are we.
And then when they met with the DPW again, they, they had a different, um.
So does that mean that those things have been resolved, I don't know, are they necessary or?
They haven't been, they haven't been resolved, no.
Well, then why are we, I, I don't know, I, but why, why are we deferring to the, to the DPW to decide what's necessary, if you determine that there are other things?
That was from the DPW as well.
So, ready, well, well, let me, let me ask Jimmy this, Jimmy, when you talked to Ray and the DPW about, you know, resolution of this, did he show you the paperwork from the meeting that said of what improvements it had to be, uh, uh, completed? And give you the.
Yes, he did.
Did he give you that breakdown?
Yes, he did.
So, did you guys work together and are those things all taken care of now?
Yes, we, we keep agreements on a lot of that stuff. So, some of this, some of this is a situation where the city has been maintaining that rule for the last fourteen years, and there were some issues that had been addressed, that I think John Roseberry or whoever wrote the letter was not aware of, and Ray was, so we had a meeting with Ray and John, some of the items that he was discussing had already been resolved. Just the initial drafting of the letter, they weren't aware that it had already been resolved. And Ray had input, that's why we're waiting for the meeting with Ray and John, and he explained to them that those issues had already been resolved. So those were eliminated from the items to perform list.
Who wrote the September twenty second letter?
That was, uh.
So, are we not talking about the same thing?
No, no, we are actually, so, so he's saying that this was Roseberry that dealt with it at first, so him and Ray, it looks like they haven't completed. So why don't we just have them review everything to make sure everything's all set?
First item on there is a detention basis, has that been resolved?
Right. Well, I don't know, Jimmy, the, the detention basis is the first on that letter, right?
Yes.
So, you know, it said needs to be cleaned of debris, shrubs, and trees, right?
Yeah.
Then the next one was the drain line from the rear of the house, so do you want us just to get, uh, the letter over to Roseberry and, and, and Ray and see if all of this stuff is good and done?
Yeah, we can do that, but we, we have already done that, that was why we met with Ray.
Yeah.
And John Roseberry, and then we had a follow up meeting, I think Elizabeth was actually at that meeting where we sat down and, and Ray and John agreed with I to review the letter, which we did, we came to a final agreement, he presented that final agreement, we agreed to perform what was in the final agreement, and I think he memorialized that with the letter to Elizabeth.
Okay, that's good, so all we do is have.
The matter is, Elizabeth doesn't include a lot of that stuff.
Yeah, but you know, we do just have Ray send us remarks on this. Ray and John sent remarks to you on this, so that this goes in the file, so that everything stays clean. So, because it sounds like they talked about most of it. But, but let's get it, let's.
Well, the, the final, final approval is gonna be with the DPW anyway.
Right.
But, so why is Elizabeth reviewing this if we're just gonna ignore it and say we'll get a final approval of the DPW?
No, no, we're saying that if they've already had the discussion around these things, they're in this letter, because it seems like they addressed them.
Well, and these, I mean, but these are Mr. Roseberry's comments, right?
Right, they're not Elizabeth's, and I don't see anything in that agreement that says they addressed Elizabeth's concerns.
Right, that's Roseberry's.
And I think that we should honor Elizabeth's concerns.
Well, we should just get them, make a statement that they addressed them.
But I, I don't, yeah, okay.
But they did, yeah.
So why don't we make that?
Yeah, that, you know, that they, you know, that they make sure they give us clarification, that we can definitely give these clarification to John Roseberry's, uh, letter, and that everything is up to snuff as far as the concerns we have with that we have listed. If, because if they've already done it, just be, yeah, that was all good, and this is all that's left.
Just, just can, just confirm with DPW that this, this list is done, and the only thing outstanding is what's in the email.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
That's fine.
That's it, yes.
Perfect.
Items one through seven.
And that protects the developer, that protects us.
That's fine.
That works great.
And we're going to, um, extends
Yes.
the completion of improvements to August first?
Including the seventeen.
Including the seven items.
If necessary.
Yes.
I would say, uh, that's good, well.
Hello?
I mean, I mean, sure.
Any, John, John, are, hello, anyone on the phone have any comments, John, Tom, Mr. Exares?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was just thinking, um, why don't we do the, uh,
Yes.
get the road work and that done early, and save that, give that one date, and the rest of the legal work is second date.
Aye.
That way, we get some of that, you know, cleaned up and those people aren't dealing with that for another year.
I can imagine, yeah, so.
We get the road work cleaned up and give them, uh, you know, until August to get the paperwork done. Just an idea.
Well, how about we, how about, well, let's do this, do we want to, um, do we want to continue? Well, I don't know if continuing, do we want to schedule this under, um, communications on the first Monday in June, and just see what the status is, and if Mr. Exares needs more time, he can request more time?
Absolutely, I got a plan.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Exares, so whatever that first Monday in June is.
I mean, what's going on?
And, and I don't know if this is the case or not, but doesn't all the road work have to be done before you can even submit the legal paperwork? Don't know.
I don't.
I don't know.
June sixth.
Alright, so we'll, we'll, we'll put this under communications on June sixth, and we'll see what the status is at that time.
Yeah.
And if, if Mr. Exares ha, needs until August first to do the physical work, well, he, we'll give that to him.
That's right.
And in the meanwhile, Elizabeth, you're gonna check on the.
We're gonna check and make sure that the seven conditions
The seven, yes.
are taken care of, and that the only thing outstanding is what's in the email.
And you can update us at our next meeting.
I, I'm inferring that, because what he has in his email is like number four and number, it's number, it might, I think, number four, number five in the letter, but we'll
I just wanna make sure that they will choose.
Confirm that, okay. Okay. And, any, anything else from, uh, John or Tom or Mr. Exares on the phone?
No, no, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you so much, Mr. Exares.
Thank you and have a great new year, appreciate your help.
You too, happy new year.
I take you, bye.
Yeah, next matter is six point two, forty B application for Marcelo Ave with ZBA. Our recommendation to the ZBA. What's this, we discussed this the last time, what is the status of the application?
The question we held up on this one relative to, to get to the hearing. I was gonna have her fill in what she learned.
Um, I went to a training on this with, um, Citizens Planning Training Collaborative, and they basically said that the planning board's comments are very, very, very valuable, and the ZBA needs to depend on the planning board. But they said the only thing the planning board could say that would, um, make them alter, the, the major design of it would be the, um, public safety and the fire department's comments on access. And then they had something, um, on environmental, but it wouldn't have, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it doesn't apply in this case. They said local wetland, um, wetland ordinances do not apply, only state. So I put in my memo that you have the, um, waivers that would be required if they were to do a subdivision. And um, those comments are supposed to be heavily taken into consideration by the ZBA, but they're nonbinding.
Okay, so.
And the next meeting for this, um, was supposed to be, with the ZBA, was supposed to be January fifth, but it got continued until January nineteenth, and it's gonna be a virtual meeting, you're not having a, um, in person meeting.
In person?
So. Yeah.
Uh, we, we were still. Carol?
Yes, I'm listening, go ahead, John.
Okay, yeah, Elizabeth, you know, she's got to. That we hadn't discussed as far as, uh, the mailboxes and things like that on a real estate plan. Um, I still think we want to make sure that we put in our comments to the, the ZBA that, uh, their current plan for a, you know, for the road extension doesn't, doesn't meet the ordinance anything over five hundred feet. And that they cul-de-sac, the road can't run through a parking lot. And the road width is insufficient, and they do not have the plans on the drawing of what the construction of the road is, that's missing. So I mean, that's just engineering wise, that should be in there.
Agreed. So what do we do?
I mean, we put that in the letter to the ZBA, and they've gotta tell them to, to fix it. It's not, you know, all we can do is give the ZBA the information. Okay? And, and, and I hope, and I'd like to have a member of the board there that emphasized what was, what we're talking about. But that's, uh.
Well, if it's gonna be virtual, it'll be easier to attend.
Yeah.
Because this could be a real mess.
Oh. It, it, it is shaping up to be a real mess, because it's, it seems like the attitude that I got was, hey, this is a forty B, we can do anything. Well, I think the road thing is a safety issue.
I think the plan was a mess, actually.
Yeah. You know, they, they're trying to get shot cuts, you know, I realize, I, I like the organization, I've supported the organization over the years, okay? But the shot cuts and things they're doing, or the direction that somebody has given them, is, is taking them, uh, is, is gonna cause problems. And we're trying to look out for the city. You know, not just, you know, the people in the area, but the, the city as a whole. In Carrigan, that's a problem, he's gonna come back to the city.
So, what does that mean, we, we have to, well, be at the meeting, somebody's gonna be at the meeting, but do they, have they received thi- this?
This letter that I wrote to the board, they haven't received, because this is my comments, this is not the board's recommendation.
So we also need, you know, is, there's no density issue with these forty B?
The board's gotta add to that.
That's a great start, what do we need to add? We need engineering drawings for the roadway? What else?
We don't think.
They do. What else do we need?
What they need.
The road itself, they're going through a parking lot, it's not a festival.
Well, that's what I said, engineering design for the roadway, right?
Right.
So. Is it too, is it inappropriate or too much to ask of, um, the planning director to
I can attend the meeting.
Submit a, submit a letter to the ZBA, giving a laundry list of our concerns, and then I, I guess I'm happy, and that, if it's virtual, I can zoom in, and I can read the list of concerns, John.
Yeah, it, I mean.
And they, and, and we really should be brought to their attention ahead of time, so they're not.
Yeah, they're not gonna try to make a decision at that point in time, because.
Like if we give them a, if we, if we submit the concerns a week ahead of time, if they look at it, they do, if they don't, they don't, but.
Exactly, yeah, we don't have, we can't do it, it's, it's up to the ZBA, but I, I get the impression when, when I went to the, I went to the first meeting, the ZBA, the impression I got from the ZBA is they were looking for assistance from us. Okay? And they, they don't, they don't deal on this stuff, this is how Bailey went.
Nope.
So, yeah, just give it an input, I get Elizabeth, just give them further input, and, and that's. That's all we can do, and.
John? John, you cut out for the last minute, because we had another incoming call, so can you repeat what you said in the last ten seconds?
I was just saying, yeah, I think it's very appropriate, that we take that added information and give it to them, the impression that I got when I went to the first meeting, was they were definitely looking for input from the planning board. So it sounded like they're saying, hey, we don't want anything from the planning board. It was just, this shape it was, and I'm sending this to all the different departments for their inputs. And I have planner, I have a planning board member here. So, that was, that was a comment that was made. At the end, though.
Yeah, you want to, Robert had comments as part of that, you want to.
Yep.
Yep.
So, do you want me to, do you want me to submit the comments I made and then add to them the comments that the board is, been discussing?
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Yeah, they're all, it all could, it all should come from the planning board. Your comments should be added with the others, so it all comes from the planning board.
Yes.
I mean, you can do it at the top of your comments too, but I think it, it carries more weight if it comes from the board.
Yeah, no, I understand. But is the board supporting the comments I made?
Yes.
Yes.
As coming from the board?
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
And then in addition.
Can I just ask one question, though? On, on the very first one, it says dead ends at five hundred feet, is that dead end or cul-de-sac? Because cul-de-sac is a five hundred feet as well, aren't they?
That's what it helps, that's how it's written in the press.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I.
Cul-de-sac isn't dead end.
Okay, so can we rehash really quickly, what are the, in addition to what is in this letter? I heard John say a road can't run through a parking lot.
Well, engineering design for the roadway
Engineering.
would be, would be, would be a real good thing. And then we'll find out if they're running it, right?
So submit engineering design for roadway.
Do you assure that it's not?
And then all department had, uh, to be. And then all department had, uh, to be informed, uh, for their concerns.
So do a department head review?
Yes.
I said, they're, they're doing that.
Well, let's.
All right, well, let's put it in anyway.
Put it in there.
Yeah, put it in there.
What else, John?
Um. The basic thing that I saw, the biggest problem with the roads, and then the other stuff Elizabeth taught. Would be the, the newer stuff, you know, as far as like the, the mailboxes and the.
Oh, the postmaster stuff, right, we have that, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Uh, so that, that all has to be taken care of.
Yep.
And that's, uh, and that's federal, they guys said, you know? And, and that's relatively new. And that's something we got in our records, but it's something that came from the federal government. That they were looking for, the mailboxes, so. Um.
It's a good thing to have there, it's a good thing to have in the discussion.
I don't know what that's saying, but I don't know. I think that the federal requirements with, uh, supersede the state. Well, we could have discussion on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
And we don't have to worry about wetlands replication or any of that?
That's conservation.
Well, I know it's conservation, but they're saying they don't have to follow, you know, our guidelines, just the state.
Okay. No, 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 no. No, that's misrepresenting. They don't have, if the city has. More stringent. They don't have to follow the city.
Right.
But they have to follow the state. Okay?
Okay.
So what they're saying is that, if the city had, uh, uh, something that was different, it was more restrictive. They don't have to follow that.
Right.
They have to follow the state's requirements. And, and our water quality came from the state. We didn't add anything to that.
Nope, no, we're gonna, so we're just gonna make a motion, and then, uh. We'll make sure when Elizabeth sends the notes out to us, if we wanna add anything else, we will.
So I have, I just wanna make sure I have, I have three things that the board wanted to add, and, no, do you, we had a letter that I wrote them last time. Um, do you want me to reiterate what we wrote in that letter?
On December twenty eighth?
Um.
Yep, that's the one we have, okay.
Well.
No, I wrote a, I wrote a board to the zoning board of adjustment, a letter to the ZBA. Um. I don't have it in front of me, but I reiter- I, I wrote down the three things the board said last time.
If they're different from what's in here?
If they're different from what's in here, it can.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I have engineering design for roadway, conduct a department head review.
Yep.
And the road can't run through a parking lot. But I can, I can, I can wordsmith that a little bit.
Yeah, that's, well, that's a dead body probably in engineering design. Uh, you'll find that out.
And you're not sure that it doesn't.
Yeah, so we'll see that on, on that. That would just be where we can, so you can only, you can say it in just one instead of two statements. But if we missed anything from the previous time, Elizabeth, add that, and then, uh. We come up with something else.
And there was a comment about not being enough park space.
Parking spaces?
Park space for the children.
Oh, you mean not place space?
Enough place space, yeah.
Well, I don't know if we can control that, it's, it's.
Uh, but that's a discussion.
It's a discussion.
They can, that's up again, we request that they can deal with, okay?
Yep.
Uh, what about the comment about the fire department, that the fire department makes sure there's appropriate access?
Sure.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that, that'd be.
He's gotta be able to publicly, he's gotta get in.
Yeah, you have that first involved at the time.
Yeah, I have that as one of my comments.
Yep. Absolutely. Should make them do a traffic study on week thirteen at that point, too. That'd really give them a little bit of a tour style.
Oh. Do you wanna add that in as a comment, that there should be a traffic study?
No, because we can't. Uh, oh, well, they can all say, no, we want a traffic study.
You can, can say that.
Well, how many units, how, what's the size of the forty B development, how many people, how many units? How many cars we parking, and then we'll see if we need a traffic study?
Okay, so are we saying a traffic study should be conducted?
Yeah, based on number of units and number of, uh, 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 parking spot, spots allotted.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we wanna make sure they even have it parking for the people they're putting in there.
Yeah, they can't, they, they, I think.
They can't. So we want that parking, you know.
It's a situation where, uh.
You gotta say, well, only one on every three apartments, uh, has a car, bullshit.
Hey, 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 hey.
Oops, sorry, 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 sorry.
Okay, I will, I will, uh.
I just never heard you. Well, I still need it.
Now, where are you gonna draw it on?
A traffic study shall, should be conducted based on the number of units and parking spots required.
Yep.
Okay.
There's the number of units and parking spots required, right? Not supply required.
Yeah.
Required.
Just so you know, we couldn't hear you through your mask.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it was distorted.
Oh, let me know, I can talk loud, I can do that.
I know, I'm sitting right next to him. Okay, anything else?
I can fix that.
Anything else, John or Tom?
I don't know, I think, I think you've got it pretty well covered.
Dean, I got a megaphone in my truck, I use it if I find.
All right, so. Um, we're authorizing Elizabeth to.
Write a letter.
Draft a letter.
Draft an updated letter to the ZBA.
Yep. Yep.
Submit it to them ahead of time. Before their June, January nineteenth meeting.
Yep.
Send that to us, too, or review.
You wanna look at it?
Yeah.
Sure.
Before I send it out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, but there can't be discussion.
No, no, it's. You can just send it.
Right, but we can't go back.
No, you know what you should do, actually, you know what you should do, if you're going to, just copy us on it when you.
No. Just, just copy us. On sending it to them.
It's gonna look exactly how it looks with the comments that you added. It's gonna be addressed to the ZBA and tailored to them. And then any comments from the other letter that weren't in this letter are gonna be included.
And then just CC us.
And I'll CC you.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
We can all respond with something if we wanna add a little tikiro there, don't we?
Well, we can, because it's, it's a violation of the meeting law, but if we get it, that's, at least we'll be.
Yeah.
Very good.
Oh, wow.
Yep, yep.
All right, she's not gonna, she's not gonna, we, I think it's pretty, it sounds like it's gonna be pretty comprehensive, so.
All right.
All right, okay, great, um. I don't think we, do we need to make a, I think we should make a. Motion, no, I think we should vote on that.
Uh, I ma- I make the motion that Elizabeth should, uh, you know, redraft the letter with the points we discussed, and, uh, to. Forward it off to the ZBA and CC us, uh, as it's the letter, so.
Second.
Motion made in second, all those in favor, roll call, Dean Villier?
Yes.
Carol Batryoso, yes, uh, Sal Chaconi?
Yes.
Paul Weiser?
Yes.
Tom Carrigan?
Carrigan.
John Souza?
Yes.
All right. Um, seven point O, Director's Report, seven point one, Planning and Development Director's Report for January third, twenty twenty-two.
All right, I, I have a few brief updates for you.
Go ahead.
Seventeen seventy-one lock drive, if you recall, there were some inspections of that property, and there were some notations that. The, um, what was on the ground didn't completely match the site plan. But, um, we met with the developer, and he agreed to go to conservation first, and then come back to the planning board, and. Um, Conservation reviewed this on December twenty eighth, so this is just recently. And I'll read the letter from Conservation, it says, um, from Angela Schofield. Um, as discussed, the Conservation Commission met with Mr. Morrow at the regularly scheduled meeting on December twenty eighth. We discussed the alteration of what was the best way to remedy the violation of the riparian and buffer zone. The commission issued an enforcement order ordering the new owner to file a notice of intent for the work done. What is to be kept and what is to be restored, once I finish typing it up, I will forward a copy to you. And I know Mr. Exares is here, um, I didn't know if he wanted to comment further on that. Mr. Exares, are you here?
I don't think he, I think you're not.
I think he left, I think he got off.
Okay, he said he wanted to be present when we talked about his, um, affairs, so I. Thought he was part here, but he's not. Okay, so that's the update on that. Um, update on Brooks Pond Development, I have very good news, there were some outstanding issues of, um. Approval, conditions of approval, and I spent last month trying to follow up on those and seeing what was met, what was not, working with the different departments. And it turns out, they have met all of their conditions of approval, I just found out from the building inspector today that the lighting is good, and that was the last thing I was waiting on. Um, there is one more thing that is required, and this is, uh, a check for twenty-five thousand dollars. Has to be submitted for improvements on four near field. And I didn't know if the board wanted to do like a official, like maybe call the press, and me, and have the check presentation.
It's good press.
The board does a lot of hard work, and you don't get a lot of credit for much, and this is something that is a positive thing.
Do we get hard ones?
We could do a little press release.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay.
Chat through phone.
Yeah, do it.
Yep.
And I, and I can see if, um, if the press doesn't wanna come, we can always take a picture and then submit it to the press.
That's probably more likely, that's what you want.
And maybe we can do it at a planning board meeting, a presentation at the meet, maybe at the February seventh meeting.
Good idea.
I will see, I will check in with the Brooks Pond folks and see if that works for them, that way we don't have to convene.
And then just do a press.
At another time that. Would, it'd be hard to track their own schedules. Okay, so that'll be good.
We do that.
Um, then coming down from the state, we have a mandate to do a new zoning requirement for multifamily. And, um, MBTA communities. So it's a whole thing, we have to create a zone, we have to create new language. And, um, it's boilerplate, coming from the state, what we have to do. Um, but I'm gonna be bringing that to the board, um, probably in February. And so just be on the lookout. It's coming down the pipeline.
Is that, is that to watch, or is that to the city council?
Um, well, the board has, I thought the board, well. It, it came to me.
So we'll get back to you.
Um, the planning, the city has to do it, whether it comes from the city council or initiates with the planning board. I don't know, I can double check and see if it says anything to that effect.
Okay. Because, yeah, we had a similar thing to like this prior on what we call a, uh. Uh, what do they call that, forty R. Um, type of situation. And that was, if you're in an MVA, MBTA line, uh.
You don't have.
I mean, they, they literally cut the, the number of, uh. Like, the residential C is eight, it would go to sixteen. And our elevation is three stories, and we go to five. It was ridiculous. But it had to be approved by the city council prior to anything being done. And, uh. That was a number of years ago, and nothing, it went to the city council and they turned it down.
We're gonna find out on that and get back to you.
Okay.
Cause, yeah, it makes sense. I mean, what are we gonna do, build tenements, uh, over, uh, by the Wayland Park Bridge?
I don't know. No, it doesn't, yeah, some of this stuff doesn't make sense, you know?
Yeah.
They, they write things in Washington, but, uh. You know? It's really not applicable out, out here.
Yeah, I'll have to check into it.
Yeah, Elizabeth will check into it and let us know. That's good.
That's all I have.
Yeah, we'll have to find out what the, we'll have to find out what the procedure is and who's. And I gotta tell them to the city council for it to be there.
Okay.
All right, sounds good, anything else? Executive session?
Oh, um.
Yes.
So, I, 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 I learned today that we now have the option to do the remote end or end to end at the same time.
I didn't even know that.
I didn't know that prior to today.
No, I didn't either.
But given where we are at this circumstance, I'd like us to consider. If COVID cases are still rising on February seventh, and we have our meeting, uh, removed.
Yep.
Okay, we have a Zoom account, okay, don't overdo this, so.
There's just, there's no justification, we're gonna do it half and half anyway, to put ourselves in risk.
No, I would. Right.
Well, those two, all right, FLA, two, those two are out of state.
Gonna have a, a high-grade, a high-grade, uh.
So, John would be calling in regardless.
Yeah.
All right.
But I'm not saying, I agree with you, otherwise, I agree with you.
We, we don't have the answer to the poll.
I thought that when the governor received the case.
Well, does the board wanna do a virtual in February, is that what I'm hearing?
Order, that would almost an option.
No, let's just see if COVID still climb, and then we'll.
If it's an option, yeah.
Make a decision.
Yeah, I mean, when you.
We can do it over email.
When do you have to advertise that, or what, what's the point where you don't advertise?
Yeah.
Um, we have a.
Two weeks.
We had an open public hearing that we continued.
For the seven.
But I think we can go to virtual, I don't think it.
Cause that doesn't have to be.
This Starbucks, it just continued.
Advertise, because it's a site plan anyway.
Right, because it's already open.
So we can.
Yes.
If we post the agenda with the, um, the dial-in.
Yep.
Okay.
Or the, zoom in.
All right, uh, anything else?
Motion of John.
Motion made?
Tommy.
Second, Tom?
Second.
Anyone object to returning, that's easy to bring now, okay, we're done.